All right. Good evening, everyone, on this nice snowy night in Lakeville. This is the Monday, January 23rd, 2023 Select Board Meeting, acting as Wage and Personnel Board as needed. Is anyone other than Lake Cam recording the meeting? Excuse me. All right, so we're gonna start right to it with Select Board announcements, and I just wanted to make sure that we received an update from Representative Oral's office regarding the legislation to create the additional seats on the Lakeville Select Board. They've been coordinating also with Senator Rodrick's office on this. Representative Oral's office will file the petition, and the Senator's office will provide additional support so they can move the bill along in time for the spring. Representative Oral's office is working with the House of Representatives Council and anticipate filing at least a placeholder for the bill by the end of, I believe it's this week. So that was one of the big changes that came from town meetings, so we're just letting everyone know where that's at. I'd also just like to remind people that I think there's still time to take out papers. I don't think we've had a whole lot of people take out papers, so if you have any questions on that, you can reach out to the Clerk's office.
I just want to, Madam Chair, so I guess this was a little confusing to me. So when they say that, you know, to move the bill along in time for the spring, it's not gonna make it for this spring election.
No, or I think this spring in the state legislature.
Okay, so this would be ready for 2024 election and not 2023?
Not 2023.
Okay, all right.
Our papers, nomination papers, getting papers will close by the time they even have a chance to vote on it, so. All right, Rich, anything? Okay. Town Administrator announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple announcements. We're continuing to work on the FY '24 budget. Development meetings with the department heads occurred over the past two weeks. We've held continued discussions with the school districts. We're on track to present the initial recommended budget at the Select Board's February 13th meeting. I met last week with Melissa Turcot from the Parks Commission regarding the Gamache Playground project, which we then called the Board-approved ARPA funding for its last meeting. We're drafting the RFP with a target release for later, for next month. Revised ARPA projects have been submitted to Plymouth County. I have a follow-up meeting with the county's consultant scheduled for later this week to determine their status. Facilities projects continue to move forward. Initial scope of the fire station renovation is complete, and our facilities manager is moving the bathrooms forward using available balance in the project. Short-term improvements in town halls, such as installing the wall to separate HR and accounting, are also underway. The outdoor stage cover, Clear Pond Park Shed and John Pond Park Building demolition project, our projects are all being prepared to bid, and our on-call OPM met with Lori Fahey last week and is preparing a draft scope of work for the senior center study project, which we'll have for you on the 13th of February. I was informed last week by Beta, our consultant on the Route 79 project, that Mastod's considering advancing the project to into the 2024 tip. A significant gating item involves clearance of the Article 97 issues with the city of Taunton. Taunton City Solicitor is working on the timeline and deliverables to determine the feasibility of advancing the project. In the meantime, I assure the consultant that the necessary local funding on our end is in place. The Old Colony Regional School District has scheduled a meeting for next week with member towns to discuss financing proposals for the feasibility study. Vice Chair Fabian and Brian Day were invited to attend as well. The town continues to seek snowplow contractors for the winter months. Interested operators are encouraged to call the Department of Public Works at (508) 947-9521. And finally, the next meeting of the Select Board will be held on February 13th at 6:00 PM in the Lakeville Police Station. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a number of questions. I would love to have you appoint these two police officers.
Okay, so questions on our announcements. So I know we're jumping up a little bit in the agenda. I just want to make sure everyone's family is here. Okay. I just want to get everyone home in case it piles up out there. So we're gonna go next to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is coming from the Chief Perkins, if you'd like to join us and introduce your two new appointments.
As you're aware, we have two open positions at the Police Department. We've gone through a long recruiting process to bring these two candidates forward to you. We had 14 qualified applicants, academy-trained people apply. We interviewed four people, conducted background checks, and we have the two best candidates here in front of you tonight. The first one is Shawn Robert. You can join me up here, Shawn. Shawn Robert is currently works at New Bedford Police Department, where he's worked 18 years. He's looking to come to Lakeville, where he's gonna bring all his training and experience. I believe he's gonna be a great asset to the Lakeville Police Department, and I respectfully request that you appoint Shawn. Effective start date of February 5th for a one-year probationary.
All right. I'll entertain a motion that we appoint Shawn Robert for a one-year probationary period starting February 5th, 2023, as position of police officer and constable for the town of Lakeville.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Shawn Robert. Nice to meet you.
The second person I bring before you tonight is Dakota Jones. Dakota resides in Middleborough. Dakota has a bachelor's degree, and he went to the Lowell Academy last year on the Sean Collier Scholarship, which was, he was sponsored by the MIT Police Department. He's eager to start his career in law enforcement, and we're happy to have him. I think he's gonna have a great career here in Lakeville, and I request that you appoint Dakota Jones as police officer constable for a period of one year, beginning February 5th, for a probationary term.
All right, so I will entertain a motion that we appoint Dakota Jones to the position of police officer constable for the town of Lakeville for a one-year probationary period beginning February 5th, 2023. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Welcome. Do you guys wanna come forward? Wanna bring them forward so we can shake their hand?
Are you okay?
Yep. I just want you to come forward so we can officially meet you. Thank you, Chief. Nice to meet you. Welcome to Lakeville. Nice to meet you. Welcome to Lakeville.
Dakota, welcome aboard. Shawn, welcome aboard. You have a good day.
All right. Thank you. I don't know if anyone's gonna take pictures or whatever. You can. You can hang out for the rest of our meeting, although I don't know that you'd find it very exciting compared to that, but we do enjoy doing this, because in Lakeville it is a small town where everyone knows your name, and it's nice to know your names even before you start, so really, welcome, welcome. All right. All right. All right, we're gonna go back to Number Three. So, right? So at our last meeting, we had some conversation about the date, the time. Oh, I'm sorry, Rich. All right, go ahead. Questions?
The first question about the budgets and the capital plan. When are we gonna get that prior to that February 13th meeting?
I'll present the budget on the date.
But are we getting the budgets prior to?
No.
Why not?
Didn't last year.
I'm just asking the question. I'd like to see the budget.
Because I'm working on schedule, have them ready for the 13th.
Yeah, I'd like to see them before the meeting, please.
We got our packets before the meeting anyways, don't we?
You'll get the presentation packets, the document itself may be ready before the packet, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I would like to see them before the meeting, please.
Okay.
And the capital plan, what's the status of the capital plan?
It's being worked on. It'll be presented with the budget.
Okay, can I get the capital plan prior to the 13th meeting?
I'll do the best that I can. This is a departure from last year. Last year we started...
You've got plenty of time. You've got three weeks to get it ready, so.
Well, we're doing the best we can, Rich. We're gonna have, give you a good document.
What do you mean?
We're doing the best we can to give you a good, solid document.
Right, but you're presenting the meeting on the 13th. We should have the stuff before the meeting.
Actually, I would hope that I'd be able to present my budget to you.
Right, right. So we do have a few people on the Capital Expenditures Committee, so it was a little difficult to get a meeting, but...
Schedule that, schedule for March.
Yeah, but we, I think we finally put one in the books, but I, I don't know what to say. If you have it, can you send it? If not, I'm...
Getting it presented to us on the 13th, for fresh eyes, I'm happy to see it then.
And, well, it should be probably most of it in the packet if we get it done in time.
I believe last year we gave you the overview in the packet and the document we gave to the night. Actually, well, it was a remote meeting, so we probably gave it to you during the day.
Yeah, probably.
I'll do the best I can to get to you as soon as I can.
Okay.
I would hope that the Board would provide me the courtesy when I present it on that day to present the budget.
Yes. Okay, next.
The next question is, you said you're working on the RFP for the Gamache Playground?
Yeah.
Can you provide the Board a copy of that, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Is it the Board's intention that all RFPs should be reviewed by the Board before they go out?
I'm just asking, it's pretty important, okay? This page, we're talking about it for three years, all right? I'd like to see what's being proposed, all right? It's not an unreasonable request, is it?
Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
I'm simply asking if you would prefer the Board to approve an RFP before it goes out.
I'd just like to see it before it goes out.
All right.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not done.
Yep. Next.
The RFP that's going out for the Clear Pond Park Shed, is that the same specs that you approved at the annual town meeting?
It won't be an RFP, because it's less than, it's not 50,000, but it'll be specs. And the specs are, the specs as determined by the Park Commission, they have, as you know, requested a larger shed, which they believe they can fit within the budget that was provided to them. So we'll have those specs, facilities is working on those specs right now.
So the shed is gonna be bigger than what we approved?
Well, you approved the funding. The Park Commission probably gets to decide what they...
Right, but the funding was based upon a certain size shed.
Correct, right. It'll be bigger than the funding originally envisioned.
Okay, so what does that mean for funding?
The funding will be, the funding will be sufficient, and if it isn't, we'll have to tell the Board it's not sufficient, and the Park Commission will have to ask for more money, but we've told them that that's not likely, so they're working within the funding.
Okay, so we're working on our RFP, or a bid document that's gonna ask for a bigger shed than what we approved?
Yes.
All right. The improvements in the town hall, the wall to separate the HR and the accounting, is underway. What is the cost of that wall gonna be?
We're doing mostly in-house, so a lot of it's being done with our own forces, but the, we're spending a few thousand dollars to be able to reposition the HVAC.
Isn't it gonna require another unit?
No, probably not. They're gonna be able to put this, they're gonna adjust the split, so it won't be a new outside unit, but there'll be a new head, ability to go in. I can certainly get the Board the full cost on that, but it's available within existing budget.
Okay, the bathroom at the fire station for the firefighters?
Yeah.
Says using available balance on the project. How much is left on the project?
About 30,000. If I can get the exact number.
All right, I, I went to the Historical Commission meeting the other night to talk about the banners for the, what's being proposed, which the Board is gonna discuss tonight.
Did we, did you mention that, Ari? In your announcements?
You have an item coming up.
It's on the agenda.
Agenda item.
Yeah, it's further down, though, right? Is there any other questions on Ari's announcements?
Yeah, the question is, so when I went to the Historical Commission, they had on their agenda to approve the bathroom for the old town hall, okay? They were supposed to approve it that night. They don't have a plan to approve it, and they wanted to see a plan.
Yeah, I'm not, well, I'm not sure who put that on their agenda. We certainly, we, I didn't ask who put it on the agenda.
I'm just saying, it was on the agenda, and they were asking the questions.
I did ask Ms. LaFave about that, and she said, but I haven't heard back from her on those yet, so.
And the second thing was having to do with the handicap ramp at the library. There's three options that have been put together by the OPM that we hired to do that, and that hasn't been presented to them at all.
So they previously approved the idea of a ramp. Nate Darling was looking to get a meet, to a meeting with Nancy LaFave to talk about the options and how she wanted to handle that. So that's where that is right now.
Right, but they were expecting to talk about it at their meeting.
It wasn't on the agenda.
It was on their meeting down below, having to do with town buildings and so forth.
Okay.
That means that it's gonna be delayed another month, because they only meet once a month.
Is there a question?
I don't know, because I talked to Nancy, and she didn't mention any of that to me either, so I didn't know that.
Well, the other problem is, we have, the original ramp was $41,000, and the proposed elevator or whatever it was gonna be was well over $100,000.
It'd be a lot more if they'd said, so...
So I don't see this as being a difficult decision to make.
The question to be asked is whether those, they've already approved the idea of a ramp, so the question is, are they comfortable with, with their two layouts of ramps, which one do they prefer? And that was really the question to be asked, and if neither one's acceptable, and they wanted a lift instead, then, and this is a lift, then we have to come back to the budget process. So we have plenty of...
I think their main concern was that if you put a lift in the building, you gotta modify the building, and they don't want to do that.
You know what? We're all like speculating what their concerns are, so if we want to bring them in and talk to them as a group, then we'll know exactly how they feel.
And maybe just be ashamed to have to wait another month, because, you know, the lead time on that ramp is months, you know?
They've approved the idea of a ramp. I think Nate's intention was to just show her the two options and see which one was preferable.
Yep. So you and I can call Nancy and see where she's at, but I know she didn't mention any of that to me when I talked to her over the weekend, so. Okay.
Just bring back a message.
Yep.
They brought it up to me, so bringing it back to the Board, you know, as a concern.
Yep.
I got a question on the, it says here the feasibility study, said the OPM met with Lori Fahey last week and is preparing a draft scope of work for the senior center study project. The feasibility study, why wouldn't the feasibility study be part of that process, and it hasn't been appointed yet?
Well, you asked us to come back with a scope of work, so we have an on-call OPM, who we have made with her. There are a number of issues besides just space for that thing. There's the septic field, there's some, with the heating plant and so on, and the OPM is well-equipped to be able to identify those issues. He's preparing a scope of work for us to bring to the next board meeting.
But isn't that the feasibility study's job?
I was instructed by, actually, at the meeting, you asked me in December to come back with a scope of work, and so that's what I, that's what I did.
Well, in the meantime, we were supposed to appoint the feasibility study, and we haven't done that yet. Right?
I, that, the message I got from them through that meeting in December, maybe it was understanding on my part, was get a scope of work, and then we'll appoint, then we'll appoint the committee.
That's what, because that's why we got together, and Ari and I got a meeting together.
I'll go whatever direction I want me to go, people telling what they want to do.
Right, so that we could bring some information back to the Board, but...
If you want me to hold off on the scope of work and appoint the committee, then I'll do that 13th.
No, I think you need to continue with the scope of work, because that's all part of what we need.
Yeah, I mean, it was a good meeting that day. Everybody met everybody. Everybody talked about the project. It was building commissioner, a new facilities person, Lori Fahey, me, you, and the...
George Figurito.
Yeah, George Figurito. So we all met each other, talked about it, and said, let's figure out the scope of work. He was gonna go over there and walk the property with Lori, so that we have, he has some idea of what...
And I spoke with him today, and he was, he was very helpful, and he's putting something together.
Will they have it ready for the 13th, do you think?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So when are we appointing the feasibility study?
Could do that on the 13th as well, if you like.
Yeah, we can do that on the 13th.
I had asked to put it on this meeting.
I thought, wait, we have the feasibility committee.
You defined the committee, but you didn't officially appoint the members. I mean, I wouldn't point out that you never officially appointed the members on the town hall fire station one either, but if you wanted, consider a formal appointment, we can certainly do that.
Just to make it for the record.
We can do a formal appointment.
Okay.
And we'll do that on the 13th.
Got it.
Okay, I got a question on the Route 79 project.
Was that part of your announcements?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
This was, this was brought to our attention months ago, Ari, about this issue, about the Article 97?
Mm-hmm.
So what needs to be done?
The, it's all in the hands of the Solicitor of Taunton.
I know, but what needs to be done?
There's a section called, hold on, I got the name, I forgot the name of the location, called Kane Pond, which is under a conservation permission restriction with the city of Taunton, and the substantial new easements required is part to cover the land for a drain outlet and swale. So the city of Taunton is under the position that that's a, I'd say substantial modification, and therefore would be an Article 97 issue. So what will have to happen is they're gonna have to get the concom, the city concomit to consent to transferring the property, the city council votes to transfer the property, go to the, get the House, the legislature to pass a special legislation to approve the sale, and then the city would have to find mitigation for the land. So that's all part of that, and there's gonna be, they're gonna, we're gonna do all through a, an intermissible agreement to determine how to move forward.
So we're months away?
Yeah, we're always a ways away on this, so yeah.
Yeah.
So the chances of getting change are slim?
Um, they didn't say no. We'll see what they say. I mean, they, we're seeing if we can get it pushed up a year, and Mastod for the first time is willing to discuss that, so that's a good sign, so we'll see what we can do.
Is there anything that this Board can do?
Not yet, but at some point, we'll probably need to communicate with Taunton about it officially, but right now, we're doing it through, you know, the channels.
Okay. All right, just let us know.
Yep.
So a bill has to be submitted, and a bill should already have been submitted.
Well, that's like step three.
I understand, but if you want to get it into this session between now and June 30th, that has to be submitted?
It can go in next, it can go in next session, probably. It could go in 24. If it goes in 24, they're doing an F L, what's it, tip for 24? It'd be a little tight, but they could do it early, early in the 24 session if they had to.
Well, the session just began.
23 session. I'm talking about the 24.
24 session, you know?
It's next year.
It just began. Not 24, it's the following year.
Well, for the budget year, yes, I understand. I'm talking about calendar year 24 session.
Right, which just began.
The calendar year 23 session just began.
Right, but they need to, they needed to submit the bills by a certain date.
For the calendar year 23 session?
Right.
Yes. The, the city needs to determine whether they can move forward this in time. If they can, you can get into the 2024 tip, you can start, you can start the land acquisition and so on, and then the, and then the city could go about through their process, or go on seventh to the state. They don't have to happen, they don't have to be stacked, they can be, they can have it at the same time, so. But it's progress that they're willing to entertain that, so.
What level of the, what we add at the project design?
The, they are at 75% design, the easements are still being fully defined, there's another, there's another, there's another stage for that. We're going to, probably in the spring, be ready to start to reach out to land, to homeowners with the initial information regarding, you know, regarding acquisition and so on, easements. So we're probably about four, three or four months away from, from reaching out to the home, to the property owners.
Okay, so the tip, just the tip that you're talking about here begins on October 1st of 2023, because the federal year is different than our fiscal year.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's gonna happen.
Well, it would be whether the city feels that they can move it fast enough. I mean, we had, went through Article 97 issue in New Bedford, and my time there over the golf course project, and we were able to submit. Article 97 bills, legislators can get those going sometime mid-session, but, but it's because of circumstances, but it is unusual. It's unusual.
And of course, we're relying on the city of Taunton.
It's in their light, it's in their city, so.
I know, but we knew about this months ago, so I mean, it's not, you know, it just didn't happen recently.
We didn't know about this, the tip possibly moving up to 24 until just now.
No, but we did know about the Article 97 last summer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's it?
Yep.
Okay. I'm not trying to be disrespectful at all, Rich, by not putting these all under old business, but I think I said in an email to everybody that it's kind of my intention to put all the projects on an agenda in March. That way, before the Board potentially changes, we will have an entire update on every project. I mean, I'm okay letting Ari manage some stuff. You want more details, so, you know, Irene's kinda in the middle, I think, so I'm just getting all the, I would just hope that we could work on all the reviews of the projects for, I don't know, Ari and I were talking probably the first meeting in March. That way, if there's any questions, they can be answered by the second meeting, so. Okay, so we are at Number Three. So at the last meeting, Ari had presented us with the dilemma of not necessarily having, not having, most likely not having the budget numbers from the state, so he had created for the last meeting two different calendars by which we could approach town meeting. I was hoping that at the MMA conference this past weekend, that the new governor and, you know, everybody else would have a little more commitment to getting us the numbers ahead of time, but it doesn't really seem like they are.
They didn't. I mean, the Joint Revenue Committee meeting is until tomorrow, so they weren't gonna sit in ahead of that anyway.
Yeah.
That'll give us a little bit of light, the meeting tomorrow, but the, and understand, I mean, you all understand, I mean, regardless of what you decide as far as the town meeting schedule goes, I'll present a budget on the 13th of February.
Yeah.
And you'll have an opportunity, we'll have, it actually works pretty well. We have budget hearings scheduled for March, and that'll be after the governor presents her budget, so you'll have something to work off of there if you have to modify or change or respond.
Yep.
So there'll be opportunity there. The, the main issue would be, is probably, if you go for a later, if you go for a later town meeting, there's probably a little less risk, it's a little less risk of uncertainty when it comes to the actual state numbers and the school budget numbers, you know, at the end. Even so, I mean, you know, you're probably gonna have, even so, a situation where there's gonna have to be some kind of reconciliation in the fall anyway.
Yep.
The state has adopted a budget before July 1 in a very long time, so, but I felt, I felt incumbent upon me to at least provide this option, if you feel you wanted to go with that.
So, so at this point versus the last meeting, I feel that it's a little more feasible to go with a later town meeting date. Now, we do know that town meeting is scheduled in our bylaws for April, but I do believe the Board of Selectmen can vote, May, I'm sorry, May, can vote to make it a little later, so if the Board wants to discuss that, we can do that right now. We've been given the dates for both the May 8th annual town meeting date or a June 12th annual town meeting date, so if anyone wants to talk about it, let's do that right now.
Question, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, are there any cons of waiting? I was just going to say, are there any cons of waiting until June? It seems that there'd be more of a, the pros in waiting for more finalized numbers.
I, I think you'll at least have more certainty as far as the House incentive numbers go if you go to June.
Yeah, to me, the only con I can see is that in our bylaws, it says, you know, the annual meeting will be in May. Rich?
Yeah, as far as the governor's budget is concerned, that she said that she realizes the importance of the state aid numbers and the foundation budgets for the school districts. And she said that she was going to get that information out well before her March 1st budget. And that's what we need to do. Because if she doesn't do that, she's going to cause chaos, chaos in regional school districts. Because the regional school districts, including our own agreements, have specific dates in there when you're supposed to approve the budget, initial budgets, final budgets, and so forth and so on. So if she doesn't do that, it's going to cause a lot of problems for a lot of communities. So I, I think that she's going to do that in the next couple of weeks, come out with the foundation. There's no reason why she can't come out with the foundation budgets because that, that legislation that was passed was a, is a five-year, you know, package. And the minimum contributions, you know, are available now. It's not a question of recalculating or whatever. The question really is the Chapter 70 funded, Chapter 70 funding. And as you know, I mean, in the best case scenario, which was last year, we only got $60 a student, which is $160,000, $170,000. So based on that, I don't see how it's going to be a significant increase in revenue. And on a local standpoint, you know, we don't get a lot of revenue except the lottery revenue. So I, I don't see why you should change it, but that's up to me. That's up to you guys.
Okay.
You can always change it at a later date. You can always move it. But if you make that decision now, you know, then you can't go back.
Yep. Um, I do know that it was difficult for us to even get the June 12th at the auditorium too. So, um, the school had to rearrange some things if we're going to use that date. So, um, because they have the spring play and, you know, other things, awards for seniors and, um, so, um, I don't know, someone can make a motion.
Can I bring up another point, please?
Yep.
Uh, according to the schedule here, the warrant closes on May 23rd. Um, the bylaw, our bylaws say it's the second Monday in March, which is, um, May 13th. So why, why is the warrant based on that date? And then the second schedule that you put together for June, the warrant would close on April 13th. That's not what the bylaws says.
You, you've changed that schedule before.
We had that schedule changed for a long time where town meeting was held in June.
No, it has nothing to do with the warrant. The warrant articles have to be presented to the town according to the town bylaw by, it has to be, uh, it shall be inserted in the warrant of the annual town meeting. And it should be, um, by the, um, second Monday in March.
But it also says that the town meeting will be the, will be the, uh, the equivalent, whatever it is, equivalent of a meeting.
No, it has nothing to do with the town meeting. This has to do with articles.
I know, but it's, it's, it's in the same section, same language.
No, it's not. It's a different section. I got it right here.
I don't know. Lorraine, you worked in Town Hall when the meetings were commonly, I mean, um, more often held in June. I would think that the calendar was always.
Based on that.
Based on what the meeting date was.
You should, the board should have shifted them in the past, so.
Right.
So.
I can dig into that a little more, Town Council, if the board would prefer.
Yeah, I mean, we can ask Town Council for an opinion, but now we're also delaying making a decision. And if we're going to stick with May 8th, then.
And even March 23rd is the third Monday.
Just tell you what it says, what the bylaw says. You just, you brought up the bylaws. That's what it says.
Well, I mean, I, we know we've done it in the past.
No, we haven't. We haven't done it in the past. Changing, changing the submission of the warrant articles has not changed. Changing town meeting has changed, but not the submission of the warrant article.
So we can always change the warrant closing date to the second Monday in March. That's not going to be an issue if we do that. Because whether, because if it opens now, tonight, either one, either scenario, we can close it on the second Monday in March and still carry on with everything else. We'll see what the big deal is.
For the later meeting.
Right. We can do either the March, I mean, the May meeting or the June meeting and still close the warrant on the second Monday in March.
Okay, well.
And that's why you have a special town meeting before the annual town meeting, because you call a special town meeting, you know, a few weeks before the annual town meeting, so you can assert articles that didn't make the warrant for the annual town meeting.
So what is, what is the date in March?
March 13th.
We have a meeting that night too. Ari, do you see any concerns with that, if we make that the 13th?
Nope.
Leah?
I don't see any concerns with that.
All right.
The budget won't be complete.
Right, right. But at least we, we know, we'll know what articles we can have on the annual and.
Yeah, we just have, we reserve space for a budget article, but it won't be complete.
Correct. All right, and then we can follow the rest of the timeline.
But if we can get confirmation too on that, I don't want to rush.
So does that mean we're going to have to wait until the 13th about this? In February?
No, but we can just find out.
Yeah.
Just for going forward.
All right.
Yep, so.
You got to open the warrant.
We have just had a meeting yet.
No, but I'm just saying, Lorraine's question about getting an answer, you have to open the warrant.
Right, I'm just saying, we should get an answer just so that we're sure going forward, so that we know. Always ask the question, but, um, I'll entertain a motion to do either, either way. I'm not making this decision because it doesn't matter to me. I know that we're still going to get negative feedback if the budget numbers change, even if we say these budget numbers on February 13th are going to change, so, um.
But these are warrant articles, Leah.
I'm talking about the actual town meeting. Isn't that what we're talking about right now?
Yes. But we're talking about the town meeting warrant articles. We're not talking about the final budget approval.
Right, but.
When, when did we have Ari and we were talking about the last year? I don't remember.
It was May.
It was May?
It was May, yeah. The exact date, I don't recall.
All right, so let's, all right, so I'll make the motion that we schedule our annual town meeting for May 8th, 2023.
Second?
It was May 16th last year.
Any other discussion on the actual meeting being on June 12th?
I think she said May 8th.
Oh, May 8th. I'm sorry, May 8th. Any other discussion? No discussion? All those in favor of the annual town meeting being on May 8th? I, okay, so we got May 8th now, um.
I can make a motion to, um, open the, um, the warrant for the annual town meeting scheduled for May 8th.
Okay, thank you.
And to close on, um, to close on.
Uh, March 23rd.
March 13th.
March 13th.
Second?
At 4 o'clock. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So the warrant is open, correct? And we will inform all parties of such.
We'll send them where tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. That was the conversation in the last meeting that we needed to let people know. All right. So item number four. Uh, discuss, actually, you know what, before we go there, I'm going to go with fire. Come on up. So that is item number seven.
Uh, six. Six and seven.
Six and seven. Yeah, six and seven. All right. I figured Ryan was here for. So, six and seven. So we have, um, a grant to talk about and then the surplus apparatus, right? So let's do the grant first, please.
So the AFG grant is the same program that we were awarded this year for our SCBA purchase. This time around, we're going for cardiac monitors, they're more than a cardiac monitor. It's a, it's kind of a, they, they monitor all kinds of vital signs. It's a high-tech piece of equipment, very expensive. The department's strategy is to, um, is to target things that have a high probability of being approved and would have otherwise be on our capital improvement plan. So we're, we're basically looking to, to not expand our, our mission or, or get into new services that we're trying to take care of, like must-have items that the town would otherwise have to pay for. To my left is Lieutenant Ryan Sylvia, and he's been taking the lead on all of our AFG grant writing efforts. And he's proven very good at it and very successful.
Okay, thank you, Lieutenant.
Lieutenant, was this, um, is this grant looking for in our FY '23 budget? Or, how long would the time be for it to be awarded?
Approvals usually, and you can, you can correct me if I misspeak, uh, the approvals usually come in the fall. They change every year depending on when the, when the, uh, the federal government sorts out their budget.
It's pretty much the whim of the federal government, but I, I would expect if we got awarded, it would probably be the fall or winter.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. And then we would seek funding for the grant match, which is 5% for our town. And that, that could be an urgent matter, depending like if there's some kind of market, uh, market anomaly at play or if there's a savings to be had by, uh, by, by a deal that presents itself. Or it could be something that we can wait for, for a fall town meeting or the normal town meeting to appropriate funds for the match.
All right, so they don't require that we appropriate and have the funding in place before you apply for the grant?
No, the performance period's two years on this grant.
Okay. Well, that's, it's good to know. I know a lot of the, the grants require approval ahead of time, whether they would even consider.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, we've done a couple like that, right?
One of the important things is that, that make you aware of this grant application and that you approve these activities. Because if we were to refuse a grant, uh, because of lack of a match, we would probably never get another one or it'd take some time to get another one.
So I guess I'll make a motion to authorize the fire chief to apply for the assistance firefighters grant. I guess.
Assistance to firefighters grant?
Yes.
With a notch of $7,500?
Well, that's approximately, so.
Approximately, yeah.
Second?
Okay. Um, just under discussion, I know you do say here, town leadership, we would need to identify, but it's not a rush, like you just said, right? Ari, any thoughts, any questions on that? You're all set with that match?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Next.
So part of this, um, the, the AFG grant that we received this year was for some state-of-the-art, brand-new SCBA equipment to replace our end-of-life SCBA equipment that we had in stock. One of the things that we, we don't do in the fire services, we don't pass on or we can't, there's no market for, um, personal protective equipment. We wouldn't give our turnout coat to another fire department to use, uh, because we have OSHA standards and there's liability involved in it. It's not like a fire truck where you can, you know, trade it in or auction off. They just don't have that program. Uh, so then we get stuck with the, the difficulty of disposing of all that equipment. Cylinders, our pressurized cylinders, DOT cylinders, things like that, it's problematic. So there is a few programs out there, nonprofits that facilitate a donation for us. They take care of all the expenses related to transferring the equipment over to, uh, basically to serve nations, uh, countries with fire services that don't have fundamental equipment. And, um, and, and that's what I would like to, I would like authorization to do with this, this equipment after its deemed surplus.
Okay. Anything to add, Lieutenant?
Yeah, no, it's just, it's one of those things where if you, if you took this equipment, the reason why we got the grant is because the equipment is available in the U.S. is really what it comes down to. So if you guys were to surplus this, you'd be getting pennies on the dollar for it. Like, it wouldn't be a lot of value back to the town. Whereas, you know, a scenario like this where we would be able to bring a nonprofit that could potentially give this to a country like, um, Lieutenant Clemens actually did a lot of work on this. He found a charity that donates this stuff to Central America. And, you know, those firefighters down there are trying to do the same job that we're trying to do under horrible circumstance. They would, they would take something that, i- if they can put a mask on and get fresh air out of it, that's like a godsend to them, you know? So it's something that, you know, we have talked to with the officers and the chief that, you know, that might be, uh, a better, a better thing to do. This is something that, um, it would be a good, I think, public relations thing for the town. And I also think that it would, uh, have the potential where that equipment could actually go and do some, do some good for somebody, you know, so.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
I, I, yeah, for discussion, I'll make a motion, um, that we declare, uh, do I have to re, I have to redo this? Yeah, I think we do. Okay, that's all right. Um, I'll make a motion that we declare the following firefighter equipment, um, as surplus. Thirty-seven SCBA bottles, um, air tanks, 18 Scott X3 self-contained breathing apparatus units, 16 Scott 4.5 self-contained breathing apparatus units, and 32 SCBA masks.
And donate them to?
So we just, it's our responsibility to declare them surplus, right?
Right.
Do we have to put the directive in there to donate them or?
You don't have to. If you want to, you can't even have to.
The chief can do that on his own.
This is a quick surplus now.
Okay. Well, it's your motion.
I'll leave it there.
Okay.
Um, second?
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about, uh, you know, these things are not allowed to be, to give to other fire departments in the U.S.
Right.
And here we are, we're going to ship them overseas to another country. I, I don't know about that.
I think, I think the kicker is all the, is the regulatory oversight, the OSHA and NFA, all the things that, that, um, mandate its replacement for us, they don't exist in these countries. And they represent an upgrade to their, their, their safety level. It's.
It's one of, one of the reasons why the EFG program exists is to provide American fire departments with the potential to upgrade their equipment to the latest, the latest standard, you know? But the, the caveat to that is that there isn't standard in place here. You know, that your type of equipment can't be more than, than 10 years old to be considered compliant. Your SCBA can't be more than 15 years old to be considered compliant. You know, we have service life on SCBA bottles, all that stuff. And it's just one of those things where for a, a U.S. department to take what we have and use it, they would have to upgrade all that stuff to the current standard, which is not economical. They might as well just buy a new one, especially with the grant funding that's available, whereas overseas.
Kamara's worried about the health and safety of that, that firefighter in another country.
Right.
If they're, they're not safe for us.
Right.
The reality is, is what, what's, there's service life available in these packs to them, but there is, there is no service life available for us because of these regulations.
Right.
Okay. I, I mean, it sounds like that you've done a lot of research on it. Um, it sounds like this company does this all the time.
Yeah, it's a common practice.
Yeah, so.
Makes me want to donate ones.
Exactly.
No, not ours.
We worked hard for those.
But then, you know, in another way, then we have to, you know, get rid of our, our own surplus here, but. Okay. So my just piece of advice would be just, you know, make sure you thoroughly vet the company, which it sounds like you have, but.
Yeah, and we'll be very transparent about what we do and who we use and we'll keep. And we'll keep you in the loop on everything.
Yeah. And if for some reason you feel it shouldn't go there, at the last minute, just make us aware, make Ari aware, if we have to do something else. But right now, we're just declaring it surplus.
Understood.
Okay.
All right.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, all right. So we have, um... Next, we have, um, discussed the American Rescue Plan Act funding and potential uses. So Ari sent us a letter on this, including some of the rules that, um, the county goes by when determining if things are allowed or not allowed. So, um, Ari, do you want to go over this for me?
Sure. Um, as the board knows, there are two streams of ARPA funding for the town. One is the direct funding from the state, I'm sorry, from the federal government to the town. Um, it's two tranches that total about $1.2 million. Um, because of the revenue replacement category, which is up to $10 million regardless of whether you have $10 million in revenue loss or not, it's just a $10 million block number, your allowance. Um, there's a lot, there's pretty broad flexibility in how we can use that money. Um, the, the board has designated, Ari designated $100,000 for COVID response, $44,785 for the Ted Williams camp, project, Henstrick project, and $170,000 was designated for Gamash playgrounds. But the board also directed us to apply for ARPA funding from the county for that. So that'll go, that'll, that'll go into the other bucket if it gets approved by the county. Um, unfunded at this point is $83,800 for the installation of irrigation wells in the police station and historic library. Those will save us money, so I would advise that we do those. Um, but, um, they, they will not be funded by the county. Um, during the, uh, last, last board meeting on the 9th of January, Plymouth County Treasurer Tom O'Brien and Commissioner Jared Valenzuela say the town will be eligible for as much as $2,077,294 in COVID funding. I provided that spreadsheet with this packet item, subject to approval regarding project eligibility. Um, to date, we've applied for $332,800 in water projects. That is not revenue replacement, that is supposedly allowable, although it's still being reviewed. Um, and $183,700 for the historic town hall restroom improvements, and $170,000 for the Gamash playground project. Those latitude projects were, um, proposed into the revenue replacement category, which you'll see from the, um, attachment, is limited to $362,000 for the, for the town. So we've used most of that with those two projects. Um, the, um, the other proj, the other ARPA projects, and this is a bribe, really, this isn't just the county's rules, this is what the federal law says in terms of what's eligible for use. Um, for ARPA non-revenue replacement is water and sewer infrastructure, broadband infrastructure, premium pay for essential workers. Um, stressing negative economic impacts, and you have to show census track ability, and a lot, a lot of number of requirements there. Um, supporting the public health response, so just COVID response, mental health, things like that. Um, the, uh, the, the board requested that we put an item on the agenda for this meeting to talk about sort of the path forward and what, what type of projects you'd like to think about looking at. Um, you know, there's, there's a couple of, um, things that we could look at in terms of water or sewer infrastructure, which the board may or may not want to pursue, um, given the downstream implications in our development and whether you want to go that way or not. Um, and that's really one of the reasons why I thought it would be best to talk about it with the board anyway before we move forward. Um, the, um, uh, I'm not too worried about the town tranche because those are all, as I said, that's pretty broad in terms of use. Um, we know we'll have a number of, um, parks projects coming our way and other things that we can, that we can apply for, which I'll be, I think will be very useful to help pay for. So, that'll be it.
Um, I think one reason too why I asked for us to put this on here at the last meeting was because, you know, they did provide us with this information and it looks like at least three communities, three or four, have already decided that they're not going to use their, um, revenue reimbursement. So I think we should make a decision on that. Or at least hear everybody's opinion on it. It's some of the bigger, um, communities too.
Those, those are communities that generally have a big water project they want to do. So $500,000 or whatever, it doesn't make a big difference to them. They want, they want to spend it all on this project.
Yep.
We're, we're not in that same place.
So do we... Does anyone have any, um, things that they want to suggest that we put on, like a possible list to do here? Is everyone, um, you know, okay letting the staff bring forward and the town administrator?
If I can, Madam Vice Chair, I, I know I reached out to Ari on this before. With our GIS system that we have in place about having infrastructure overlay, you know, on that, um, now is there a cost to that, that we would be able to fund through this type of initiative?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Yes, there's probably a cost, but no, it wouldn't be eligible. Um, because they, they, they really want you like expanding water infrastructure or repairing, or repairing your water mains, that kind of thing. I mean, you know...
But that could, might be reimbursable though, right?
It's...
Technically, we could go through the reimbursement...
Well, it would still wouldn't be, I mean, it's either way, whether it's going to be, we've used up most of the revenue replacement piece. So if we, assuming that we get the, assuming we get Gamash playground too. So, um, those rules will just apply, you know, for the rest of whatever we use unless we use the town's piece. If we use the town's piece, we already have the money on hand. Um, but the, the, um, I mean, it's telling that, remember, the, the county wouldn't even approve the installation of the bathroom.
Right.
Just the water and sewer going to the site.
Going to it, yep.
Yeah, which is, you know, which is, I still kind of scratch my head at, so...
Yeah. But, never mind.
I don't, we don't need to believe her that, but yeah.
Yep.
Actually, having to do with the GIS piece, you know, the assessors, uh, have control over that GIS piece. And there's a number of layers that they were supposed to add to the GIS, including, uh, water infrastructure. Um, so we already have the software, you know, capable of doing that. So I don't know where that process is. We talked about this a couple of times over the last couple of years of adding some of those layers to the GIS mapping. So somebody should check that out, find out where we are.
Maybe that's something Mark Resnick, through you, Ari, would be able to...
After you and I spoke, I had an initial discussion with him. It's on his list.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, because that would be really nice to, um, be able to see where our infrastructure stops and starts with regards to the water from Totten and Middlebar.
Well, we know that, um, uh, Totten Water has overlays that are available.
Right, and they'll be able to extract that.
We just gotta get them and load them up, so...
Yep. Okay, so some of these other projects, I'm not sure. I mean, we've talked, we talk a big game all the time about, you know, things that we want to see done and they've been kind of moving forward. But is there something that has come up in discussion before that we've never really...
Uh, we're gonna be coming, um, I had a meeting with Mike, Michael Smith today about their capital, park commissioners' capital plan. And, um, they, you know, a number of, the number of projects that we'll, we'll program out through the period, but they, they also have one larger project, which is the Fields project. And, um, that one's probably gonna be about $100,000 or so. So that, that would be the kind of project that, you know, just like the playground, I would, I would suggest bring it forward, come forward and look at.
Right, and is there a timeframe that we have to have these in by?
Have to spend it by the end of '24.
Okay.
2024, calendar year.
Calendar year, okay.
Have to, actually have to obligate it by the end of 2024. Have to spend it by, I believe, middle of '25, '26.
Okay.
All right. So I guess if anyone comes up with something, they can just sort of send it to us.
I have a question on the bathroom at the old town hall. It's listed here for $183,000, Ari. Is that for the septic system and the thing, or what is it for?
That was for the, the, um, the submission that we gave to the county, um, was meant to allow flexibility whether we had to build either adjacent outside or adjacent to or inside. So there, so there's, there's a good amount of room in that project to allow for, to, to, to allow for the, whatever structure you want to have.
I, but I believe the decision, um, is going to be that they're gonna build the bathroom just inside the door.
Which will have, which has other costs associated with it, but yeah. There will be less than $183.
So is this for the septic system too?
No.
It's...
They already approved the septic system as part of the $300,000.
So it's $183,000 to, that seems pretty high.
It was, it was very expensive, yes.
Yeah, I mean, they have to do like a build-out for it.
Yeah.
Plumbing.
Yeah.
Fixtures.
Basically, the, the, the septic and water are just going strictly up to the location. So there's a fair amount of work for the inside. And if we do interior, I don't think it'll be $183,000. I think $183 would have been a structure outside too.
Right.
Um, but if we do it interior, there's gonna be a fair amount of fairly precise work needs to be done to recommend, to recognize the...
So out of the, out of the, um, the two, the two, uh, groups, the first group, which is the water and sewer, right? 544 plus 544, right?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the 544.
Plymouth County. 544 and 544, page one, page two.
Oh, you're talking about the, the allocations? Okay, yeah, I understand what you're saying. All right, sorry, yeah.
Okay, so out of that allocation that has already been approved, I believe.
Yeah.
Is $332,000.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So the additional $183 plus the Gamash, which is, uh, 170, is, uh...
It was under the Part 1 revenue allocation line.
Okay, so that is being proposed to come out of the Part 1 allocation, which is 362.
Correct.
So that won't leave anything left there.
Like $10,000 or so.
Yeah, which is fine because the way they manipulate these numbers...
I mean, there are two possibilities, Rich. One is that they find some way not to approve it, in which case, you know, we're back square one. I don't know what they, why they wouldn't because the application, plant process for that for the allocation piece, Ari, Ari submitted the applications.
Right.
Um, they're very simple. It's not like all the various demographic data they require, things like that for the, the other ones. The revenue, revenue replacement is, is much simpler. So hopefully that won't be a problem, but I'll, I'll, Ari has a conversation later this week with their consultant to find out where we are. Because I would note once again that even though the treasurer said that we're getting, that they've figured this out, that we're getting this piece, it's not been approved yet.
Right.
Still in their, what they call Level 3 review, so...
So, uh, based on that, then the first allocation of 544 and the second allocation of 544, right? Out of about a million dollars, we've only used $332,000.
Correct.
So that's roughly...
Third.
700K left.
Yeah.
Which can only be used in that particular case for water, sewer, broadband. Broadband, which we don't have that problem.
Yeah, my question, we have broadband issues.
That's not an issue.
So I think we should go to the cable advisory committee and see if there's something to be done on the broadband side, I suppose.
Well, we, we are very lucky because the, uh, the Comcast and the Verizon are required to provide broadband to every home in town.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not aware of any issue.
It's been a long, long time. Unless there's some, uh, some, some residents or whatever that don't have it, but I don't think so.
And I have looked into whether you can use the money for subsidy. You can't use it for subsidy. It has to be used for building broadbands, physical infrastructure.
So brings up the question though, the fiber optic grant that we got to connect up all the town buildings, right? So is there any additional costs with that because of broadband service?
It has to be community broadband.
It's community broadband.
Yeah.
It's not town. Okay, so that's gonna be a challenge.
Yes. I, I, honestly, I, I hate to say this, I don't like to turn away grant money, free money, but it is gonna be a challenge to find projects that fit this, that, that fit within the vision of what this...
Right.
What the board wants for this town.
Right.
If this, if you're interested in expanding sewer and water, then all over the place, then you have an opportunity here, but that's not something we want to do, so...
That we know of.
That we know of, yeah. I mean, I'm not, I'm not switching too generally. I apologize.
No, I don't know how much we could actually do for that amount of money.
It has to be municipal too. It can't be private water, so...
What would, well, all right, I'll just throw it out there. What would the cost be to get, um, water out to Betty's neck?
Ooh.
I know.
It's a long one, yeah.
Because that's...
If the board's interested in looking at that, we could look at it.
There's nothing out there. There's no pipes or anything out there.
Well, that, that would be, if you're putting water out to Betty's neck, you're, you're really kind of encouraging development out there.
Right.
And I don't know if that's what, that fits within your vision.
Does John Pond have water?
So John Pond is, has well, that part of this $330,000 is dealing with that situation.
Right.
If you recall, part of the dispute we had with Plymouth was that, um, we were taking care of, we, there's a single well at John Pond, which is being used for wa, for drinking and for irrigation, which is a problem. And, uh, the, um, the proposal had been to install an irrigation well and then convert the irrigation well that's existing, this little bit of water, to a, to a drinking well. That was being denied by the county because they said you can't install drinking, irrigation wells. And they want us to put in a drinking well, which would have cost double.
Right.
Um, fortunately, I mean, I think once we sort of explained it to them, from the county treasurer and the divine, and, and they saw, they, they did the logical thing, which was yes, allow in this case, but save for, for drinking water. So, um, you know, they're very, 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 very squirrely about, um, you know, audit risks, so...
Okay.
That was the, uh, park commission. One of the things that, uh, hasn't been discussed is Claire Pond. Any updates and improvements to Claire Pond? Are they included in the capital budget?
There are a number that they, I, I don't have the, in front of me. I apologize, but, but there, there, in the conversation we had with Michael Smith today, there were a number of items, including several Claire Pond projects, including playground, basketball courts, um, the snack bar, I believe. I believe the snack bar. I think those were the three major ones.
Uh, what about upgrading the bathrooms?
I don't recall seeing that. And that would be something that we could, certainly, it wouldn't be something that would be paid for with...
The county.
With the county, but we could certainly look at that.
Yep. Which...
Right now, I'm trying to get the fields over the, over the, I didn't put a lot of time into that, but yeah. We have a little time. If that's something the board wants us to push on, I can certainly push on that.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on this, questions, discussion? Okay. Uh, let's see. Next, we have number five, which is the Fire Station Building Committee. So, um, everyone submitted, um, they're at-large members. Um, but the first thing I want to do is just, um, let's just go through a formal, um, vote and just appoint the three people that are part of the original charge, which is the town administrator, fire chief, and the building commissioner. Um, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint Ari Sky, town administrator, uh, Chief Michael O'Brien, fire chief, and Nate Darling as building commissioner to the Fire Station Building Committee. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will those have an expiration date, manager?
Um, isn't it a one-year appointment? I thought some of them were one-year appointments.
That's fine.
Tracy tries to get us to do the July 31st, so we're all on the same thing, so we'll not have...
We can do that.
It's up to the board. And then you can reappoint them on July, uh, August 1st.
Uh, okay. Well, why don't we say then through June 30th, 2023?
Um, July, July 31st.
July 31st, 2023. Okay. Want to amend?
Yep.
Okay.
Amended.
Amended. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, next, let's do the select board member, because we have one, two, three of the staff positions. Then we have one select board, one finance committee. Did they bring us their recommendations?
Yes, it's Lori Constant.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm having a little problem looking at things tonight, so.
I'm sorry, it's Lori Constant, yeah.
Okay, so, um, any volunteers for the select board? I'm volunteering. Anybody else?
I'm interested too.
Okay.
I make a motion when you appoint select board member, uh, Carboni, to the, uh, fire station building committee.
Okay. The only thing I'm going to mention is if you become chair next, it's that and that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll second. Um, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, so Brian Day, we said, is the one from the, oh, Lawrence Constant, Larry Constant, okay. Entertain a motion to appoint Larry, Lawrence Constant from the finance committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on Larry? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, um, it looks like with all our submissions, um, we came up with the top four for the at-large members. So again, it's four at-large members, three, um, of the staff, one finance committee, one board, select board member for nine people. Um, and we came up with, is everyone happy with the first four on this list? Should we go through them individually? Does anyone want to make a motion on how to appoint?
If I can, Madam Vice Chair.
Yep.
Um, we had 14, uh, interested candidates, um, you know, for the positions for, um, members at large, um, for the community. And I was very pleased that we had that much, um, interest. So for me, you know, going through all of the, um, the submittals, you know, looking at each candidate and what they were bringing to the table, um, it was just so varied, um, and I know that we were looking for candidates that did have some experience, um, whether it was with building projects or engineering. Uh, so, you know, I didn't take this lightly. I did go through, you know, each one, and, um, so when I did identify my top four, uh, you know, it was based on, on that. So I just want, you know, for the rest of the, um, the submittals, the people that had submitted, um, interest, that I hope that, you know, they understand that this was, you know, strictly just a, um,
Well, I'll agree with you. I think we were given a difficult task because we were given almost like the cream of the crop to choose from. Um, I was really quite thrilled, actually, with the, the ones that came in. They were pretty much everything we asked for, and I was really pleased to see even some new names. You know, and this is, this is a big ask on this one, um, you know, but there is a lot of expertise out of all 14 people, so, um, I, I thought, I thought the pool was fantastic, but it did make my job really difficult, so. Um, anyways, so I don't know if we want to just go, uh, one by one in this order. If someone wants to make a motion, um, and then we can discuss it. Otherwise, I'm just gonna, um, we didn't, we didn't say an alternate, but we can definitely keep these other names for an alternate person. Um, if someone has to, you know,
Step down.
Step down, yeah. All right, I will entertain a motion that we appoint, uh, Peter Conroy, Michael McCullough, Kate Shing, and Matthew Simon to the building, uh, committee for the, uh, fire station um, as the four at-large members.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those four? Anyone not happy with those four? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And also, um, through you, Madam Vice Chair, uh, Town Administrator, could we please, um, you know, prepare a letter
Absolutely.
To all the other, um, candidates. Yeah, I do, you know, I know that this board would like to express their
Yeah, absolutely.
I can't remember if Tracy said she already did, but, um,
I, I, we will, we'll actually let the note respond.
Yes, okay.
Do these need to be appointed just through July 31st as well?
Um, yeah, so I guess through July 31st. Yep, through July 31st. And then the motions through July 31st. All right. Okay. Um, all right, number eight, that's where we are?
Yeah.
Thanks. Um, so I think, um, everyone's had a little conversation with Lori Fahey, who's the director of the senior center. So I just want to be sure that all of us are in agreement that we want to do this. We used to do this before COVID, um, where we would go, I think it was once a month, um, from like nine to 12. Um, so I don't know if anyone wants to pick a date. We, I don't really think we need to vote on this. I just think that it's nice to let folks know that, um, the select board is going to resume, um, the select board hours. So one selectman will be, one select board member will be at the, um, senior center on the first Friday. Is that what it is? Is it the first Friday?
My calendar.
Yeah, that's what she said.
Yeah, I think from nine to 12.
Second, it's the second Friday.
Second Friday, from nine to 12, which is, um, also during their, um, the coffee hour. And it doesn't just have to be seniors that want to come in and talk to the selectmen and ask them questions. Um, it can be anybody. Um, you can email ahead of time to make a specific appointment if you want during that time. You can just walk in. Um, and I've had all kinds of different questions asked to me, everything from, you know, land use to bylaws, to water, to, um, all kinds of things. So that will begin February? Does someone want to sign up for February? Anyone?
It's February 10th, right?
Yep, because we have, the 13th is a meeting.
I think I can do, I can do March.
Okay.
I'll do February, come on.
Okay, so we have Rich, February. Irene will be March. I'll take April. Um, and then we will revisit it in April for the May meeting. All right, once again, second Friday of the month at the senior center, the select board will start holding their, um, hours there between nine and 12. Anyone is welcome. You don't have to be a senior to come and ask a question, um, or have a discussion. All right, um, so agenda item number 10. Um, we have a request from Ken Upom Senior to be reappointed as a constable. Uh, the police chief reports all is good. Um, so I will entertain a motion to reappoint Kenneth W. Upom Senior as constable, whose term would expire January 18th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, we also have, um, in front of us, a resignation letter from James Kenny from the Energy Advisory Committee. Um, Jim has done a tremendous amount of work, um, for the town of Lakeville for all kinds of things, environmental, energy. Um, I'm really sad to see him go, but like I said, he's done years and hours and hours and hours of work. Um, so I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of James Kenny from the Energy Advisory Committee.
So moved reluctantly.
Second.
Um, other than, for discussion, other than just wanting to thank, you know, Jim for all his time, he, he is going to be a big loss to us, but I do know ours are already working on the transition, and Jim has got all his files in extremely organized, uh, manner, um, to, to share with the next person. Um, so any other discussion on?
Yeah, I would just like to, um, send an official letter
Yep.
From the board.
Yep. Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And like we said, Ari is working on, um, a transition for that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Next, we have, um, resignation letter from Michael Smith from the Community Preservation Committee. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation letter of Michael Smith from the Community Preservation Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And again, I know Mike's doing so much work for the parks, and he's doing his own work too, so he's like, I'd rather spend my time doing really good work here than trying to spread myself too thin. But I do know that we also, um, need to appoint, it's the parks that need to appoint that position.
Doesn't designate somebody in the board will appoint, so now that we have the resignation accepted, it actually already went to the Parks Commission, so
Yeah.
Soon as they'll prioritize it, we'll nominate.
Okay, um, let's see. So, um, agenda item number 13. So these are charitable contribution proposals. Um, we have, um, excuse me, Madam Vice Chair, I'm going to excuse myself.
Okay.
Um, we have, um, some money still left from, um, the host community agreements, so, um,
Should we give a quick overview?
Yeah, if you could. Thank you.
So, um, altogether, we received $40,000 on the cannabis concerns, um, because there are two annual contributions of $10,000 from each company for charitable activities. On to date, the board has approved distributions totaling $15,519. There've been $24,481 available for future allocations. At the December 5th meeting, the board authorized, voted to authorize a new round of applications for use of the proceeds. We received nine applications totaling $22,947. Um, summary, uh, there was one from the Arts Council for 2023 summer concerts. Three from the Council on Aging for ADA-compliant picnic tables, Christmas holiday luncheon and the St. Patrick's holiday luncheon. Three from the library for team gaming at the library, uh, wonder books and box books and golf in the library. Um, one of my personal favorites, by the way, golf in libraries, front event.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one from Betty's neck, for events at Betty's neck, and then one from the select board member La Camera for, um, banners on Bedford Street.
Okay, um, so I don't, I know all the applications here. I read through some of them, but I have very little idea what banners is all about.
I'll explain that, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Um, if you recall, last year, I don't remember when, about nine months ago, we were talking about, uh, putting banners up on the telephone poles on Bedford Street. And, uh, we ran into a few problems doing that. First of all, we needed permission from, um, Middleboro Gas and Electric to allow us to do that. We finally got that approval, I don't know, late fall, I believe, Ari.
They're about to.
And, uh, the second issue had to do with the installation. We were hoping that the, um, Middleboro Gas and Electric would, uh, install them for us. Um, they don't, they don't want to do that. That's okay. Uh, we figured maybe the highway department, but because they're electrical poles, the highway department didn't want to do that. So we have, uh, found a company that, uh, will install the banners. So the banners are, uh, 40 by 30, and, uh, what's being proposed is that every third telephone pole, starting at the, uh, town office building up to the police station, and then up, uh, Main Street, uh, just past Assawumpsit. And, uh, that was, uh, one of the reasons why I was, um, meeting with the historical commission, because I wanted their input as to what they wanted to put on these banners. Um, these banners are 40 by 30, um, and, um, so they're going to look at options, um, from the town seal to town buildings, or, uh, old, old buildings or whatever, um, to put on these banners. And, um, these banners will be, um, originally, we talked about using American flags, but, uh, people convinced me that that wasn't the right thing to do, because the American flags don't last very long. And where the banners are going to be located with those winds coming to us, Assawumpsit Point, um, that's a major concern. So, um, that's what's being proposed. So during the discussion, uh, with the historical commission, um, it was brought up that, uh, maybe we all should consider in the future, um, recognizing service, uh, people that served in the, uh, armies, Navy or whatever it happens to be, and maybe put them in between the poles, uh, of these banners. So that's something that they want to look at in the future, but not right now. So, um, that's the proposal.
Okay, um, so why isn't this coming from the historical society?
Because that was my, that was my, uh, I, I was on this project over a year ago trying to get this addressed.
Okay, um, so I'm not, I'm not really, I'm seeing banners as work for the DPW, Rich. I'm seeing it as work for, you know, a lot of people, um, and I'm not really in favor of doing banners, so, um,
Why do you figure it's work for the highway department?
Well, because if one comes down, aren't they going to have to be the ones that put it back up, or?
No, the company they were going to hire, you know, will, will do that. And then they're also, they're also guaranteed. Uh, because if you need to replace the banner, you don't really need to replace the hardware. You only have to replace the banner.
Yep. Um, yeah, plus it's $9,000. I mean, I think that's a lot of money to spend on banners. Um, so I, I honestly, I'm not ready to, to do this right now, but, I mean, I'd like to get all the other ones approved for, you know, the Council on Aging, the library, Betty's neck. Um, maybe we can just wait on the banners.
Okay.
Because I'm not ready to do it right now.
So you see all these other towns putting up these banners, and here we have, you know, everybody excited about putting these banners up, especially the historical commission. And this is not, it's the first time we talked about it. We talked about it at least a year ago, if I'm not mistaken, Ari, somewhere in that area. So I think that's a shame, because it would really, really make the town look nice to have these banners available to promote our town. But that's up to you.
You know what? I think I just want to talk to the historic society, because the historic commission, because I've talked to a lot of the different members, and, you know, I think the original idea was to put flags, but, you know, plus we've never really, I, you know, maybe I've forgotten, but I remembered something about flags, but again, we're not sure what they're gonna, if or what they're going to pick for banners. I just, I just prefer to wait on that one. But, you know, so there's only the two of us voting right now, so, um,
So I'll make a motion to approve the charitable projects proposals of, uh, $22,947.
So that includes the banners?
It does.
You won't remove the banners?
No.
Well, then I don't second your motion.
Okay, then the motion fails.
Yep. So I'll make a motion that we approve these projects Yep, so I'll make a motion that we approve these projects so that the Arts Council, the Council on Aging, the library, and the Betty's Neck folks can get their contributions, but minus the banners. Okay, so you won't second my motion, so that motion's dead also. So you would rather no one get money if it can't be your project?
Well, I just think it's ridiculous, you know? I mean, this is not town money. This is money that's been donated.
Right, money that we don't know that we're going to get going forward.
Yeah, but this is a one-time expense.
I don't see that as a one-time expense because I, in, in, in three years from now, I don't think the company's going to be coming out to do this work for free. I don't think it's going to be guaranteed forever. Um, so it is going to be an expense, and I'm actually quite disappointed that you won't give these other folks their charitable money, their contribution, because we can't do these banners, when if the Historic Society is so convinced they want these banners, they can tell us so when they come to see us, but. It's fine.
You got choice.
No, you just chose not to give everybody.
No, you chose first.
No.
I mean, this, this is not a surprise.
I didn't choose first, Rich.
This is not a surprise.
I don't want to spend $9,000 here.
We had Ari doing a lot of work.
I also don't think.
And Frank doing a lot of work. We brought it up before to address the issues.
Right.
This is no surprise here. I think it's a damn shame, you know?
Well, I think it's a damn shame that, again, the Arts Council, Council on Aging, Library, and Betty's Neck don't get their money just because we're not going to do one out of all those. So, moving on, I guess we don't allocate any money to anybody because we can't do the banners. Uh, next, um.
Okay, then, I'll give Lorraine.
Next, we have, um, meeting minutes from January 9th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved. I do have some questions.
I'll step down and second.
You gave me a chance to second it, but that's okay.
And your corrections, Lorraine?
Yeah, they're just minor.
Minor, I might even share them, I can.
Yeah, I can just share them with, with Ari. I mean, they're really, it's not changing the element at all, it's just more of the radical. If the board shows business or you want to know what they add, it's just.
Um, no, you can just tell them.
Okay, I'll go.
This is a long set.
Oh, do you want me to tell them now?
Oh, yes, I thought you were, sorry.
Oh, all right, page seven, um, under the discuss impossible vote to approve the funding for Gamash Playground.
Yep.
Um, Melissa, and I know, she has one S in her name.
Yeah.
That's all. And then, um, on page nine at the bottom, last paragraph, uh, one, two, three, fourth line up, after it says, "Said it's great," semicolon, "there are a lot of people in our community that do good things." We can just add, "There are." Ask me, that's done.
Okay. All right, any other corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any new business?
Yes.
Okay.
I had asked Ari to, um, do an analysis of what the, um, cost is to provide health insurance for the, uh, 12, uh, town officials.
Okay, that, you know what, Rich? That's not posted. Ari asked, told me you wanted it on the agenda.
I'm not, I'm not going to discuss it.
And I'm not discussing it because, you know what? It's new business that's not posted, and I made a decision not to put it on the thing. So unless you have anything else, we're moving on to old business.
Well, my question to you, my question, because Ari said to me, to call you.
Yep.
To ask you why it wasn't put on the agenda.
Okay, you want to know why it wasn't put on the agenda?
Yeah, yes.
Because taking this spot as vice chair, okay, because you vacated the chair, right? Very dramatically, might I add.
That has nothing to do with this.
It does have to do with this. You put the, the board in my hands, and in my hands, Ari and I, I said to Ari, we are going to finish all we can before the election. In my opinion, opening that is new business. If the new board in April, whoever's on it, wants to address that, Ari has it on his to-do list to inform the new board that that's something, whoever the next chair will be, he will remind them. I want to finish business, not open new business.
Well, that's not good. I mean, why would you do that?
Because that's.
You still have, you still have over two months between now and April.
Because that's what I'm doing. I'm in this position right now, and that's what I'm doing. That's it, plain and simple. My, my decision, my decision to make, I made it. Any other new business? Any other new business?
Yeah.
No, I'm not entertaining anything to do with that conversation. I, it was asked and answered, and you're bringing it up anyways, and I gave you my reason, and I'm done. I don't have to give a reason, but I gave you a reason. I don't want to open any new business right now. I want to finish everything on our docket for this year.
But it has to do with the budget.
It's in the budget, and it's going to be in the budget going forward.
Yeah, but you had new, two new select persons that are going to be coming on, it's going to cost another $50,000.
You know what? That's not mine and your problem.
It is our problem.
No, it's not. Town meeting voted for that, okay?
Then what I'm saying is, we go to town meeting and then vote it.
That's not what I think we should do, and I'm the one making the decision right now. So you know what? We're not doing it. Town meeting voted for it, they, we explained the financial implications to them, the finance committee recommended against it, so they're telling us that we have to do it. I'm not going to undo what town meeting just did, plain and simple. Okay? So town meeting knew exactly what the details were. We were very clear, you and I were very clear, that it was a financial burden as well, and the town meeting still wanted to do that. So, and you know what, Rich? In a couple of years, when all this fanfare about making the board to five people dies down, and no one's taking papers out, maybe that'll be the only thing that gets someone to take papers out. Any other new business? Old business, any?
Can you, is this open session now, can I speak?
Um, it's not technically, but I'll.
I had a question. I sent a letter to the select board, my servant right now.
Yep.
I was following with the staff, said that, my name is John, and I'm at 436 Bedford Street.
Um.
It was picked up last Tuesday.
Yep, so I do believe we've received that letter, and I do believe the town administrator is working with.
It's a matter with the building commissioner.
Yeah, it's a matter with the building commissioner.
It's been with the building commissioner since later day. I haven't gotten, I haven't even had all one phone call back in all this time. I think that's a bit ridiculous. I'm paying my second tax bill, and I haven't gotten a response, and I mean not one word.
Okay.
Mrs. Sky emailed me a few times.
Yep.
He was very gracious to do so. I know that's not his purview, and I do appreciate that, but I have no answers at all.
I know, and you know what? In all honesty, we've been informed that it's been with the building commissioner, and he's investigating, and, um, I feel.
I understand, and you're not making that decision either, but these are planned violations that have been on the books for, for almost 30 years. I recently found out through a public document search, and I've lived there, and it's been atrocious. My wife just had a heart attack, we listen to this every day, now we've got tow trucks coming in as well. Okay, that was initially denied, then suddenly it was never enforced, and then it was okay to have tow trucks coming in with 90 dB universal. And I don't want to go off on a tangent, I know, again, that's not anybody's here job to, to do this, to litigate this or what, um, as a judge. But the thing is, is I just find it reprehensible that no one from the government can give me one word other than Mr. Sky for a response. That's, that's a challenge.
Well, the board, the board can't make decisions independently, so.
I understand that, I don't want you guys to litigate.
Right, right. And I do know that it is with, um, the building commissioner, and it is his purview as the zoning enforcement person, and we've, I asked.
But I think what's going to end up happening is, I'll have to go and get a lawyer, and I'm on fixed income because I'm retired now, to get a writ or a mandamus or whatever they call that, to force an elicitor response, when I'm a taxpayer, I shouldn't have to go through all this crap. I've, I've bothered Mr. Sky a lot, and again, he's been gracious, he at least answers.
I know, no, I know, and he's made us aware of the situation, but like I said, we haven't met on it because there's a lot of details that are being worked out, and we can't make a decision or a decision to get involved.
I understand, Madam Chair, but what I'm saying is, I know nothing, I'm totally in the dark. Mr. Sky has to rightly defer to the building commissioner?
Mm-hmm.
But that doesn't mean no good, because I don't know when, or where the answer is going to come from.
Right, and, and again, I do understand, and I really wish I could give you my answer, but I'm not, the three of us can't, you know, um.
I understand, that's what we do.
Right, but we have to.
What I mean is, it's like a passive veto. That's not, that's not in the bylaws. You don't get to just ignore a constituent, you just don't.
Well, I don't think it's being ignored, because I do know as a matter of fact that Mr. Sky.
Well, you must know more than I do, because no one's gotten back to me with anything. The last I heard was when Mr. Sky said he was deferring to Mr. Down.
Right.
But I know, by the way, the gentleman in the past.
Sure, and you know what? We all know that Nate is extremely meticulous, so before, you know.
I don't buy that.
Well, you know what? We're not here to disparage anyone and.
It's almost, it's almost four, going on bylaws.
Okay, I know, but you know what? We're, we're not here to discuss any one, you know, person.
I'm not trying to say any.
Right. But you have to also.
But before I filed that complaint, I talked to him personally, and he agreed with everything that I said.
Well.
Until, until I actually complained, and then it's been held up ever since.
Okay, well, we also can't do something if we feel as though we need a legal position and something else. So right now, we don't, I don't have an answer for you, but certainly tomorrow, we're going to ask Ari to follow up with the whole, um, with Nate Darling, but I really wish that, you know, um.
I'm trying to be patient, you have to understand, this is almost five months now, okay? And, you know, you know what makes me the most upset is the non-response. That is unacceptable. I've done sales engineering for years, for the last 15 years of my career when I was working, I always got back to people, even if I didn't have an answer.
I know.
I would say, I will be getting you.
Like I said, as for the board, as for the board, none of us can independently make a decision and send it to you, okay? So we're all doing.
I'm not trying to be, I'm talking about communication, there is none, none.
Well, I can, I can tell you that all three of us have reached out independently to the town administrator to make sure work is being done on it, and that's all I can tell you right now, is that there is work being done on it.
I'm not in my mood, I don't know what's going on when you guys are talking about this stuff.
Well.
No one reached out to me.
We will, Mr. Sky will talk to Mr. Darling tomorrow and get an update, and the two of them will.
Okay, I understand the position, but I want you to understand my position.
I do.
I'm here in that.
I do, and you know what? This is.
Five months.
Right, but.
Bylaw says I should get an answer in 14 days.
Right, but I feel as though, you know, we've, you weren't on an agenda, we didn't really have a community, you know, conversation. I, I'm glad you came, and I'm glad you expressed yourself. I hope, you know, that we can get you an answer soon.
I appreciate, I appreciate your time and your, and your sincerity, and so what I will also say, and I'll be quiet, is that when I did the public document request, that took me a month and a half to get documents that I'm supposed to get by law within 10 business days, okay? And I never got an answer on that either. I had to go down to the commission every other day saying, are the documents ready? Do you have the documents? Where are the documents? It's BS, okay? It, it shouldn't be run like that. If you need to hire three more people, put that in one of the warrants. I don't care what you need to do, but you need to fix that. I'm serious, really, it's not fair to the, to the people. I talk to people all food and time, and they, and they're sick of it. They're sick of the non, the non-response from the building commission, and sometimes other things as well, but I can't speak to those because those are specific to all the folks, but I can speak to this. It's frustrating. I'm old, my, my wife's elderly, we're both retired, and we're listening to tow trucks coming in and all this other crap going on all day long. And it's, it just shouldn't happen, okay? I said my piece.
Okay.
I'll wait for your response, I appreciate your time, and that's all I have to say. But I had to cut, I had to just say it, so.
No, that's, that's fine. That's fine, can you just state? I know we have.
It fills up after a while.
I know, I do know we have your name in the office, but if you could just state your name for the record when the person does the. Okay.
436 Bedford Street, Lakeville.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, under old business, anything under old business? All right, um, so if that's that, um, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with